All right, thank you all for coming. This is council meeting. First order of business is to pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have any citizens that signed up to speak?
Yes, sir. Nova Olson.
How do I work this? All right. Thanks, everybody, for your help. Appreciate it. I have some questions. Why have you, Mayor, allowed the interim city attorney to be disrespectful repeatedly to a council member? Why haven't you publicly stated for the record, "City Council Member Jen Thompson was arrested for charges which the county has decided no action would be taken"? If you didn't know anything about it, as you stated previously, why haven't you spoken out on her behalf as the leader of our community to restore her? Why have you, AC, the supposed CEO of the city, not ensured proper accounting by way of an external forensic audit before now? What are you hiding, Mr. Mayor? Why haven't you, CEO of the city, taken care of the city by holding developers accountable for ensuring the city needs are met for wastewater treatment, roads, amenities, et cetera, in exchange for the millions of dollars that they've earned? What did the city get in return? Why have you, CEO of the city, failed to lead in getting business done rather than Jen Thompson proposing almost every necessary piece of business to city council meeting agendas while you remain inactive and silent? And finally, a letter for our community. Chief Jason Jordan had a doctor visit today and unfortunately did not receive good news. As most of you know, last month he was diagnosed with stage four colon cancer that has metastasized to his bones. Today, he found out that that is not something that can be cured. The chemo is just a Band-Aid to allow him a little more time with his family. The doctor was reluctant to give him a specific amount of time, so in three months he will have another scan and go from there. With all that being said, I would like to take this time to ask each and every one of you that prays to lift up Jason and his family fervently. They will need each and every one of them as they walk this road. He has given so much to our community. Anyone who has come in contact with him would agree that his character as well as his morals are beyond reproach regardless of what some may say. I have only known Jason a short time. As a matter of fact, October of '22 at the street festival was my first real conversation, and at this time I was also able to meet his wife Brenda, who is also very sweet. Jason visited a funeral home this afternoon to begin making arrangements. He is very concerned for both his wife and children. He wants to make sure every possible detail is taken care of. There are donation containers at Country Corner as well as Godly Pizza. A silent auction and raffle are also going on at Godly Pizza. You can Venmo or log into his GoFundMe page, which are both on the Godly Pizza Facebook page. You can also text, and I will send to you. Myself, Kayla Lane, Nova Olson, DL, and Eliza Duncan are working on putting a special benefit together to take place on June 3rd at a yet undecided location. More news will be forthcoming. If you would like to help, any member of the community would like to help or want more information, please contact any one of us. Medical bills, as I'm sure you would imagine, are stacking up fast, and a funeral is not cheap. Understandably, he very much wants to get the funeral taken care of prior to anything happening so his wife does not have to deal with all those decisions while grieving. It breaks my heart to see anyone having to do this. Let's help make it as smooth as we can and be the community that I know and love. Together is where it starts. Sincerely, and thank you, Jen Thompson.
Right before you start, are we streaming because I can't find it on the YouTube channel? Are we streaming because I cannot find it on the YouTube channel?
You got a habit of starting time without us talking. You haven't started my time yet, have you, Mayor? All right, I'm just making sure.
I guess until we hear back.
All right, Mr. Cooper?
Yes, sir. Hello, Mayor, City Council. Thank you for your service and time here. There's going to be changes after today, but I want to tell you basically what I've observed over the last six months. Basically, it's a bastardization of representative government. So your neighbors, the citizens of this town, have elected people, and the will of the people through three city council members has been completely stymied with potholes, speed bumps, roadblocks, legal wrangling, basically process issues. The intent of how this is supposed to work is not what you all have accomplished here. Hiring a lawyer, not even looking at her resume when you had numerous candidates? Is that what's best for Godly? Hiring a police chief whose credentials are verbally told to you? Is that what's best for Godly? Let me put this into perspective for you. If a member of this community goes out and rapes women, molests children, and during the legal proceedings, i's are not dotted and t's are not crossed, or an investigation is botched by the police department or the investigative service, it does not mean that children were not molested and people were not raped. It just means you use the processes to get around and circumvent the intent of representative government. Can you not see that? You have basically stalled six months to get to this point when three individuals who had the majority of the vote of your neighbor, your neighbors, were not able to enact anything, not out of the way representative government should work, but solely out of your desire to feel you're more important than three individuals making decisions that they were elected to do. You should feel really proud of yourselves because you've accomplished what you want, but did you do it the way that you should do it? It's a very good question y'all should ask yourselves. Are you proud of how your version and your intent with representative government has gone here? Seriously. I hope y'all look in the mirror and seriously ask yourselves that question. Have a good day. Good luck to y'all.
Good day, City Council and Mr. Mayor. I'm going to start with a hopeful quote from Taylor Swift. If you don't know who she is, ask your grandchildren, your children. "Every day, I try to remind myself of the good in the world, the love I've witnessed and the faith I have in humanity. We have to live bravely in order to truly feel alive, and that means not being ruled by our greatest fears." So some of you council members seem to have a fear of the community, of the greater community. You need to take a look at yourselves and decide what is best for Godly. Godly is not yours. Godly is ours. It belongs to all of us. You have to do what's best for everyone, to the best of your ability, not just for the select few just to line their pockets. And as a leader, you need to foster resolutions. You need to collaborate. You have resources. I'm sure you're connected. Use them to make a better Godly, not for yourselves. Thank you.
Good evening, City Council and Mayor. Thank you again for your service. I did want to speak on a couple of topics. Number B on the agenda is to approve a council rules and code of conduct and policy and procedure, and I applaud you for putting that together. I think that will be very helpful in moving forward with the city. I also wanted to voice my opposition to letter C, and that would be the RFP for the external forensic audit. I think that's frivolous and unwarranted and unwise use of city funds. I don't know that, I believe that there's any type of corruption or theft or any wrongdoing intentionally going on at the city. So I disagree with that. I'm going to read a scripture, 1 Peter, Chapter 3, 10 through 12. "If you want to enjoy life and see many happy days, keep your tongue from speaking evil and your lips from telling lies. Turn away from evil and do good; search for peace and work to maintain it. The Lord watches over all who obey Him, and He listens to their prayers, but He opposes everyone who does evil." And I'd like to just ask you all to bow in prayer right quick. Dear Lord, thank you for bringing us together safely. Keep the matters of our city and the decisions that our council and mayor make to the best interest of the constituents and the residents here. I pray for Mr. Jordan, that he can have peace and healing in your internal life. And lead us not here, but deliver us from evil, Lord, and see that we do good in the world, in your name I pray. Amen.
Hey, Lila.
Good evening, everyone. I just wanted to remind everyone who has not voted that Election Day is this Saturday at the Park Pavilion and also Pleasant View Elementary from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. And I would like to thank everyone who has voted. And I also would like to remind everyone to keep Chief Jordan and his family in your prayers during this time. I can't imagine what the family's going through, and so I just want to remind everyone to keep that family in your thoughts and prayers and continue to pray for this election as well. So, thank you all.
I have a proclamation here. Who lives in very good employment going up to another position. Whereas we're here today to express our appreciation to Chief Jimmy Willard and honor him for his distinguished 24-year career with the City of Godly and dedicated service to the residents of Godly. Chief Willard began his career with the City of Godly Fire Department, April 17, 1999, and has served as fire chief since September 20, 2016. Chief Willard served as the first paid fire chief for the City of Godly. During Chief Willard's career, he helped bring the ISO rating from a 7.9 to a 2.0. I'm not familiar with those, but I understand that that significantly increases the city's status and protection level. He established the paid stipend program for volunteers. He established the first paid firefighter positions for the city, and he brought the department up to TCFP standards. Over his 24 years of service, Chief Willard has displayed the highest example of character, ethics, morals, and unselfish service. On behalf of the entire city council, I want to express our sincere appreciation to Jimmy for his loyalty to the City of Godly and wish him much happiness as he begins his exciting new chapter in his life. I, AC McGee, Mayor of the City of Godly, do hereby proclaim Friday, May 5, 2023, as Chief Jimmy Willard Day. In the City of Godly, and urge all citizens and employees to join me in the city council in congratulating Chief Willard on an outstanding career with the City of Godly and wishing him many continued years of happiness and good health. Thank you very much, Jimmy. Next item, approval of the minutes of the regular city council meeting of February 7, 2023. Any other motion to that?
I have no other motion. I'll refer to the minutes, Tuesday, February 7, 2023.
No second? Is there an issue with the minutes?
Yes, so I asked for the resolution for both items A and B, which would be the resolution for the hiring of the interim city attorney and for the interim city secretary. I still never received those.
Okay, if motion dies, you'd like a second? I may discuss and consider for possible action. Discuss and consider for possible action, approving amended memorandum of understanding for the school resource officer program for the City of Godly and the Godly Independent School District in authorizing the mayor or his designated sign the agreement on behalf of the City of Godly, Texas.
Mayor, Council, this is coming back to you from the last meeting. There were requested changes in Section 16 regarding reimbursement to the city. I've redrafted those, reimbursement to the city for expenses for the SRO. That section's been redrafted to create as follows. The district agrees, the district being Godly ISB, agrees to reimburse the Godly Police Department for all reasonable expenses incurred by the Godly Police Department related to the SRO's equipment and training during the term. This is memorandum of understanding, provided, however, that the district shall be responsible for the upfront and final expenses related to the TAZRO and NAZRO conferences, including travel and lodging costs related to those conferences. Reimbursement for equipment and all other training costs shall be made within 30 days of the invoice date. I sent this draft to Godly ISB on April 17. I have not heard back from them. I've followed up several times and still haven't heard back from them, whether they're applicable to those terms.
So essentially, they have not approved it?
No, I've contacted the superintendent, superintendent's assistant. I contacted the person who's in charge of their safety issues at the department.
Have you had any correspondence with anyone?
I've called, I've emailed, I've, you know, carrier pigeon if I had one. I haven't heard anything. They did reach out in regards to a different memorandum. I emailed that person to see if they can get call or mail.
Next item, discuss and consider for possible action regarding ordinance adopting city council rules of conduct and procedure for the city council of the City of Godly.
Council Mayor, this is the same item from last agenda. You received that last meeting or prior to that last meeting, a copy of the rules of conduct and procedure that had been drafted. I believe in the interim, you all were going to look at other cities that had previously been provided to you in January of this year.
Did you guys receive any edits from any council members?
No.
Did you?
I never got around to it. When can the folks speak to us? By now, at this meeting, other meeting? What's the, I've heard, explain to me the state law of talking on the agenda items A, B, C, when each of them pop up. Is that allowed by state law, as a weak vote or far or go against the laws?
So the way that it's been interpreted is that members have to sign up to speak if they want to speak either at the citizen comment period or they want to speak during a specific period.
So they can, if they want to speak on Agenda A, they can set there what they sign and, "I specifically want to speak on Agenda A." Okay, but that's in this right here?
But it's only prior to the reading, right? Like before we get to the actual agenda items and the public speaking part?
I'm not sure.
So we should ask if people can speak on the item as we are discussing it?
They need to sign up.
But the only time they need to speak is prior to actually getting to the agenda items? That's what you're asking?
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't want to be able to speak on the agenda. I didn't know what the law was for one.
So the law says that you can sign up to speak either at the general public comment section or you can ask to speak on a certain item?
I won't be able during, and for the most part, everybody has spoke very politely and the people have gone well. I'd like to keep that to where, I don't want anybody to speak up during the course of a meeting, get hauled off, get dropped, whatever, I want to be able to say their piece. I don't want to stop on anyone's property. Rubbish, of course, hateful speech, of course, we got policemen, get rid of them, kick them out, but just say, "Hey, what about this or what about that? Help us figure out what they all want." I want to be able to do that during a meeting.
How do we work that in there? Hardly, not, that's what I want, maybe nobody else wants this, but I'll say, have you voted on or what? We have discussion every once in a while, not, not, I keep that.
Is, is there a clarification on they can speak on an agenda item before the meeting? Just voice their opinion on, or on that agenda item, adopt during the meeting?
So?
Yeah.
The way that it's worded is that, uh, public comment shall be allowed as permitted by the law. So like I said, if you want to speak on a specific item on the agenda, you need to sign up to speak. But you can request, I want to be heard when that agenda item gets called up or to speak at the general portion of the meeting.
How do we protect people making comments if there, or is there any way to do that during? When we're talking about an item, somebody wants to make a comment during that, something they think about them, uh, how do we protect them to be able to do that?
Well, it's important, um, when the council is discussing an item and considering an item, those items are being considered by the council. So it's important to keep the decorum of the meeting, that public comment be allowed at certain points. That's generally up to the person who's presiding over the meeting, the mayor, in his absence, the mayor for him, uh, to govern when people speak. Uh, otherwise, you have chaos when people are speaking outside of turn. Um, it slows the wheels of the process, so, um, it, it's generally up to the mayor as a presiding officer to determine when individuals can speak, whether to speak from you.
I got no problem, that's a good underlie, if somebody makes one comment real quick, finds what the people talk. They're gonna make sure there's nothing in there that's be careful. If you, everything happens to someone who happens to voice an opinion, other than, hey, you know, we're discussing, you be quiet or we'll talk to later.
So, I also think there's a general misunderstanding that the way the law has changed means that anybody can speak at any time and scream their, their, uh, opinion about whatever the council's talking about, whatever they want. That's not the case, um, you know, like I said, the mayor's in charge of keeping the decorum of the meeting and determining when individuals can speak. Um, as the presiding officer, the mayor has the discretion also to remove, um, or have the sergeant in arms, which is also laid out in the rules of procedure, have sergeant in arms, who is the highest ranking officer typically, the chief, who's here, um, to remove someone who's being disrupted during the meeting.
On our, uh, presentation, citizens' appearance comment period, does it state in there that they can speak either before the meeting, uh, during this comment or they can speak before each individual item?
It says they can, they can speak as permitted by law. And, and the reason why it's worded that way, because if the next legislator goes and changes it, then you're gonna have to change your, um, your rules of procedure every time. One little thing's changing, one thing changes when people can speak.
Do you have a signing sheet, Kathleen? You have an official signing sheet?
Yes, sir.
Can we fix it to where it says before meeting or a specific, uh, item? So they can mark down what they want to put on there? Should we have that where people will know they can speak up? I've had some people come in and say they, they want to speak on, and they were waiting, on something, and they were waiting, but they'd signed up to speak, so it's a bit confusing. I'd like to have it to where people will know they can speak before the meeting or a specific item that pops up in front of the city council.
I guess just for clarity, you're saying before the meeting, but you mean the general citizen?
Yeah.
There is a little bit of a difference too when someone chooses to speak. Because if someone's choosing to speak during citizen comments, there's not the back and forth. If they choose to speak during an item, they're put if the council wishes to be able to back and forth because that has been specifically noticed in the, you know.
Good.
So, on one dot one, why are we utilizing the fifty-one dot zero zero one instead of twenty-two dot oh three eight? It seems that most chapter twenty-two government codes utilize the national code instead of the fifty-one that we're utilizing.
So fifty-one oh oh one of the local government codes specifically says, "The governing body of a municipality shall or may adopt, publish, amend, or repeal an ordinance, rule, or police regulation that is for the good government, peace, or order of the municipality, for the trade and commerce of the municipality, and is necessary for proper carrying out of power granted by law to the municipality or to an officer or department of the municipality." So that gives the, uh, council the authority to govern itself and to adopt rules to govern itself for the proper functioning of meetings. What was that section that you cited in the local government code, the chapter twenty-two?
Twenty-two dot four, the name, C.
It's just another ordinance that says the same thing. "The governing body shall determine the rules of its proceedings and may compel the attendance of absent members and punish them for disloyal conduct." Um, the section fifty-one oh oh one is foreencompassing. Um, section twenty-two point oh three eight is limited to just those things. But they both offer us a city to do this.
Uh, section one dot four, a review, says following municipal elections each year, the city council may review these rules of conduct and procedure. I think the "may" should be put as more of a definitive term of "shall" review. Because again, they have to be changed, just means that the new council shall look at them. That way the new council members have a chance to actually look at it. In section one dot five, it says, "City manager shall mean the city administrator appointed by the city council." Why are we using a term that we're not a chapter twenty-five or we don't have a city manager?
We can change that to city administrator. And I assume you mean you would want that carried through the entire document?
Yes, please. On the section two dot four, special called meetings, although there's nothing in state law that requires a time limit set for calling special meetings, are we able to set that in our rules of procedure?
I'm sorry, what section are you referring to?
Uh, two dot four, special called meetings.
It's typically the mayor's discretion, um, as the states and what the state law says, that three members of the council can request that a special call meeting be called. And it's typically the mayor's discretion that, um, you're, you're limited because you're a type A municipality. You can only do what is authorized by state law, so, um, you can make rules as long as they don't counter the state law, um, as to when they should be called.
So we can set a one week time limit for him to call that special meeting? We can't change to three members or the mayor? I would like to see the council set a time limit for the mayor to call a special meeting for section two dot four. Section two dot six A, "How will supplemental or emergency agendas be handled in relation to all agendas shall be reviewed by the city attorney?" This should be outlined in this document.
So, emergency meetings, those agendas will be, uh, reviewed by a city attorney. The state law specifies when emergency meetings can be called, and typically those are, um, fourth major cases, you know, act of God, um, emergency, weather, those types of things. Um, you know, COVID was one that, that allowed emergency meetings to be called. So, um, the state law already specifies when emergency meetings can be called, and the state law specifies how that meeting has to be posted, et cetera. Um, in those situations, typically your city attorney will also review those, maybe those agendas in those departments.
It says, uh, news shall be provided also to the media. So what does that mean? Love the news channels or?
State law says that they request it, they notify, and we have to notify.
That's part of the requirements for those emergency meetings. The presiding officer of the government body, mayor, or, uh, the member of the government body who calls an emergency meeting or adds an emergency item to the agenda of a meeting of the governmental body, and again, there are, there are only specific things you can call an emergency meeting for, add an emergency item for, shall notify the news media of the emergency meeting or emergency items as required by this section. The presiding officer is required to notify only those members of the news media that had previously filed at the headquarters of the governmental body a request containing all pertinent information for the special notice, agreed to reimburse the governmental body for the cost of providing this special notice. The presiding officer or member shall give the notice by telephone, fax, um, electronic mail, or at least one hour before the meeting.
So two dot six B discusses that you're turned in by twelve noon on the seventh calendar day, preceding the date of the regular meeting for item two, like be placed on the agenda. Is there something in here, and I may have missed it, that says in public documents, developers, anything like that, are required to submit their items?
No, I mean typically if a developer is proposing a zoning change or requesting a settlement agreement or something like that, those would be submitted before the council meeting?
They usually submit it two days before a council meeting, and we have to, of course, special.
I'm sorry?
They usually, I'm sorry, they usually submit it a couple of days before, uh, council meeting, we've had to have special call, special meeting on, or not special meeting, but our second meeting of the month to accommodate them. So they, uh, a rule like that for them would be greatly appreciated. But they have to have it in by a certain date.
We can't make rules for them, the, the law allows you to make rules for you. So, um, if, let's say, a developer has something that's to come before the council, they're gonna need to get it to whichever council member they want to propose that item or to the city at least seven days before.
Well, I'd be good at five days before, we still got to do it.
We have a rule, this is the ordinance.
I'm talking for a developer. I'm talking for a developer.
No, this, this time period allows for presumably a city administrator to review and develop the, the agenda with the mayor, uh, so the city attorney to review it, to, to create and, and review any documents that are gonna go in the packet. So, um, if someone turns something in and they don't meet the deadline, then they're gonna have to give them to the next people.
And how does that affect their filing date that they keep using against the developers?
I'm sorry?
How does that affect the developers that keep using their filing dates, their thirty days? We turned it in and it's not fault you didn't look at it?
Are you talking about flat reviews?
Yes, I suppose so.
So those need to be heard within thirty days, so.
Yes, but from, what time can they be placed to, to be on the agenda so that we can look at it? Is there a time limit for them to come and say, here's my flat, please look at it, and we say thank you? But is it a time limit for the meeting, is there a time limit for that? A time limit for us is great, and I'm asking you if there's a time limit for outside of the city council?
Well, presumably it's a cutoff for the city council to place items on the agenda and for the agenda to start being prepared in seven days, and they would need to be, um, have their information to the city seventy.
Okay, presumably, but is there a longer, they haven't done it in the past, that's what I'm saying, it has not happened. So, I don't want to presume, I want to use some kind of rule that says, well, we keep, why can't we? Why can't we put a date on it, uh, set a day date for the developers to, to give us their, put their information?
So, the, the law and the purpose of these rules of procedure are to adopt rules of procedure for the meetings, studying the meetings, and for, uh, uh, people in attendance during meetings. The purpose of this is not to address developers and those types of issues.
Oh, okay, because the developers are in the meeting, they are here, they're part of the meeting.
So in any other city, if, if you have to get in something on the agenda by a certain day, you have to meet those deadlines, so.
I know, that's what I'm asking, what is those deadlines for them? Maybe it's not in this particular section, but what is their deadline?
It would be the same as, yes, we would have.
But can we make that in writing someplace?
I would recommend not to specifically make that in writing on here. It would be, they would be bound to that same, um, seven day deadline to get on the agenda or to get an agenda item on the agenda for the next meeting. But I would, I would recommend not to specify that this also applies and/or to specify a certain group of people outside the council that have this requirement.
I would like to make an extension of, um, B, if it is important. Um, so it states that the council member requesting the agenda item shall be responsible for the agenda briefing or presentation of the item after the meeting. Agenda items requested are subject to review and/or revision by the city attorney for compliance with the Open Meetings Act. I would like to add, if I may, if the agenda item is out of compliance, then it shall be reviewed with said council member for necessary edits.
Can you read that one online?
Sure.
If it's out of compliance, then that item, uh, then it shall be reviewed with said council member for necessary edits. The city attorney shall review.
Right.
I've got the wording here, um, if the agenda item is determined to be out of compliance with the Open Meetings Act, then the city attorney shall review the wording of said item to help bring it, said item with the council member. Not trying to be out of order, but people online, council members, they're, they can't hear you. They're watching the video feed and they can't hear you. Would you mind using your mics?
All right, so, can you hear me?
No, you need to turn up a little bit.
We can barely hear you, we're here.
Yeah. Yeah, it helps if you're closer, but.
Sorry.
Can you hear me?
Much better. Thank you.
So on two dot six B, it says, any council member desiring a particular item addressing official city business to be placed on the council agenda. Desiring is kind of left for interpretation. What's the exact process for a council member to get a particular item on the agenda?
They shall notify the mayor or city secretary in writing by twelve noon on the seventh calendar day preceding the date of the regular meeting for placement on the agenda.
So no matter what I ask for, it'll be on there by the seventh day prior to the meeting, does it violate state statute?
Well, and then edit will be done, so they will... Okay, so two point nine, mayor pro tem, it states, I'm not gonna read this whole thing, but it says, the mayor pro tem shall act in the absence or illness of the mayor or failure or refusal of the mayor to act. In the absence of the mayor and the mayor pro tem, any council member appointed by a majority of council members present may reside at the meeting. What constitutes failure to act?
There's not a lot of case law on that, but that is work for work with the statutes. As to what the role of the mayor pro tem...
So can we limit that?
I'm sorry?
Can we change and limit that?
Well, no, it's state law. I mean, it's state law, it is, is the state law. So I would say you gotta leave it as is.
Okay, so just for clarification, at what point does the mayor pro tem interact?
There is no case law for that.
So let's just say hypothetically, the mayor gets an email, citizen wants something, twenty-four hours later, still no correspondence. The mayor pro tem can may come in and take care of it?
There's no case law open for interpretation of that. So failure to act, you know, in that type of circumstance, I would recommend that the council take action to allow the mayor pro tem to act, to decide as a group whether the mayor failed to act or not, rather than the mayor pro tem just going on their own and determining on their own that the mayor failed to act. So I would recommend that the council take action to allow the mayor pro tem to take action in the event and to determine whether the mayor failed to act.
But how do we take action if there's not, the time is not on our side? It doesn't make sense. That doesn't make sense. If we're two weeks away from the meeting and something needs to be done, how are we gonna take action to allow the mayor pro tem to take action?
So this is specifically at meetings, it's not for general authority of the mayor. This is for meetings.
Where does it clarify that it's for meetings only?
Rules of procedure and conduct are for the meetings. It's in the first few seconds where it lays out what the purpose of this is. Rules of conduct and procedure adopted by the city council are applicable to the members of the city council.
Okay, so where does it say meetings?
It does not specifically say meetings. But like I said, you're gonna have mass chaos if you have a mayor pro tem that is deciding unilaterally that the mayor has failed to take action. So the recommendation would be that the council vote as a whole to determine whether the mayor has failed to take action or not to allow the mayor to take action.
Okay, we also have issues with the mayor actually acting, so I kind of feel like he needs some justification there.
There's no case law, so you're not gonna get any justification. Let's say he doesn't act and I do something. If someone feels like things are out of line, you're not gonna make case law. Somebody's gonna have to sue the city to make case law.
Which is never a good idea. You don't wanna be on the forefront of getting sued for issues like that. Which is why I would recommend in that situation that the council take action as a whole versus one person unilaterally deciding that the mayor has taken an action.
So in section two dot nine, it also states that the mayor pro tem will be, shows him at the first meeting in November. Why is that whenever we have our elections in May?
We can change that to May. So it should be, it says at the first meeting after city council's general election is final. So that would be at the first meeting after your May meeting or at the first meeting in November in a year where there is no election.
Well, we always have an election. There's one seat and four seats.
Every year, okay.
So do you wanna do it in May or November?
I mean, there might be, there might be a circumstance where someone runs unopposed and you don't have an election. So you wanna just change November to May?
That's what you all...
I just feel like maybe, yeah.
Two dot eleven, section A, section number four, uh, back to twenty-two, we voted to not allow anybody on the governmental body to extend by video conference.
Do we want to have that included? If we have this one, it's, um, basically, what's the other one? It's just, I guess, it's, um, so, if you have any ideas here, it's just, you know, it's actually, it's really, um, it's...
My understanding of the issue is pretty distinct, but it's, you know, probably which is reliable, um, and how to... Definitely, I wanna pass the possibility of this, um, to, uh, participate in meetings with the, uh, with the, um, um... Um...
Okay, the city council shall make reasonable efforts to allow individuals barred from the council chambers due to capacity issues to participate in meeting, public hearings, and public comment.
Public comments shall be allowed as permitted by law. No formal actions shall be taken on any issue not in this felony agenda. The mayor or a majority of the city council may set the uniform speaking time with her speaker. The speakers will be called in the order that visitor cards are received. I would like to change that to the city council may set the uniform speaking time, and that time will be five minutes.
That's the time that you all have now?
Yes.
So if the council mayor or a majority does speak?
Yes, it just needs to say.
It just needs to state your speaker shall be permitted to speak for comment.
Yes.
And are we going to start giving out cards, or do we need to keep that current?
I couldn't think you would have me these cards if y'all just go to vision, you'd see the list.
Okay, so then.
Do we.
Well, then the order they appear on the signage.
215B11, citizens and other visitors attending the city council meeting shall not bring food or drink into the city council chamber or into any room in which the city council. I think we should make an exception for water, beverages, or clear drink.
Don't look around the room.
We narrow it down to not bringing food.
No more, uh, no food.
No, you can't drink.
I can say one of our cities adopted this yesterday, and they didn't like the dress attire required for.
This is casual. I'm that perfect. We've got representatives, so if you don't look good, you don't.
The comment was made that my business casual might be different from someone else's.
On 217B, city council members request for information. I will be stated request shall be for inspection only. Can we remove that? I want to copy it so I can. You can run the research.
So when it says your question shall be for inspection only, what exactly does that mean?
That means that you can come in and look at the order once the city secretary is prepared.
Yeah, I thought we must take that off, please.
Can you find the number of requests person number one now?
I don't know.
Hello?
You can't. I just could recommend against.
Okay, so this form here, this is how you say. I'm not a lawyer, and I don't think either these other ones are. So is there any particular verbiage that has to be on this form in order for us to obtain information?
It's already on the form, that's why we drafted the form, because if you're asking for information in your official capacity, then you're asking it with this form. There are certain times when an individual in the council might ask for information on your personal. And so that's why this form specifies that you were asking it for your, in your official capacity. Part of why the distinction is required is because information received in your official capacity, if it is accepted or confidential under law, if you disclose that, that's violation of the law.
Okay, so if I want the 2023 proposed budget or the final budget. So if I say I'm requesting this information, yada, description of project, if I just put budget, and then detailed description of documents or information received or requested FY23 budget, proposed, or final, I have to make sure that I use that sort of verbiage, right? So if I just put FY23 budget, is that going to be good enough?
Well, the city, it's just like an open record request. The city needs, or the city secretary, whoever's staff is going to have abilities to know, have enough information about what you're actually requesting. So that might be the circumstance where clarification is requested. You know, in the PIA world, you know, the city has the right to ask for a clarification. If that was requested on this form, the city would probably ask for clarification. You have to be specific so that we.
So this is bad, because this is godly, and about ninety percent of us, they're country bumpkins. So they don't have the same verbiage as someone of worse sort might have, or I don't know what type of person you are, but, I mean, we know what we're talking about because we live it every day. Now, the people here, like Roger, for instance, Roger, he's trying, I'm blind in heart, I'm so sorry, but I'm just using you as a sample. He's not going to be able to request the same type of stuff that I do because he doesn't know the verbiage. So how hardcore are you guys to be on this form?
It needs to be clear enough so that staff knows what you're asking for. This is different from public information requests, but I imagine that it would be treated as saying if it's not clear what the council member is requesting the copy of, then the city would seek clarification.
I just don't want a bunch of back and forth like it has been the past six months, where it's tooth and nail trying to give this information because we don't know the right verbiage. I mean, the way it's been in the last six months has been complete ridiculous. So if this is going to clarify and actually give the ability to obtain those records, then I'd be forward. But if you're going to continue in a sport that you have been in the past, I don't think I want to move forward with it.
Well, we've discussed about the handling of requests currently from council members. They're all being treated as public information requests. When things are getting released in public information requests, they're, whether they're confidential or not, they're, I mean, up on the internet. And so at this time, we're treating all of the record requests in the interest of the city, or all requests for records is open records requests in the interest of the city. To protect those confidentiality and those cases where the city has a prerogative to keep information confidential.
So wouldn't that, when you discuss that type of thing, wouldn't that be something you need in contrast to the council when you discuss it and decide that? So then we're not trying to kill ourselves in order to get the information that you need?
That was communicated to the council.
Did you guys hear it?
So without getting ourselves in trouble since that was discussed in the executive session, before that executive session, I had never heard that.
As I stated, there are things that the city has the prerogative to keep confidential or accept from disclosure. There are things in the past that have been put on the internet that are confidential by law and places the city in liability, and for that reason, we're treating all requests as open record requests.
Okay, so.
This would change that process. This would adopt a process where if you are requesting information in your official capacity, you would have to follow this process. That being said, if you are requesting information in your official capacity, you are bound to those same things, attorney-client privilege, pending litigation, pending complaints, pending prosecutions. If that information is released to the public, you can personally be held criminally liable for releasing that information if it's information that you received in your official capacity.
So at those times that you're speaking of, has it been addressed one-on-one with that particular person, and if not, why not?
No.
And as a city attorney, in order to protect the city at that time that is being violated, wouldn't it be simple for you to come and say, hey, by the way, you're doing this, this is against yada, 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 we need to stop? Because how are you going to prevent that from happening from any other time? I mean, we need you to work for us as a protector. If you're not doing that, then you're not fulfilling your duties.
Well, if someone is doing that and posting information that was received in their official capacity that's confidential, they're acting in a criminal way. And it's, we're the city attorneys, we're not your individual attorneys, so we're not going to reach out to you and say, hey, you're breaking the law, you're acting in a criminal act. We're not your personal attorneys.
Okay, but you just said the reason that we're having to do open record requests is because that is happening. So, I mean, you're contradicting yourself in a way because number one.
No, because as city attorney, our duty is to protect and keep the city from liability. So we are doing that and treating things as open record requests because there are numerous lawsuits and issues pending against the city that are ending up in the public.
Okay, and this is the first meeting that we're discussing without it? So if you're trying to protect the city, it should have been an agenda at that time that it happened so that we could discuss it, and we could have taken it into executive session so that we could protect the city?
So do you mean if I asked for things in my official capacity and outlined the two steps that are required to meet to ask for something in my official capacity by state law, why have I still not received my audience?
I'm sorry?
I have requested multiple documents in my official capacity and stated why they were in my official capacity.
So in my discussions with the AG's office, they have indicated that it is the city's discretion whether they're going to treat things as requests in official capacity or public information. So I don't know what you requested per se, but if it was treated as open record request, and you were requesting something that's confidential by law or could be accepted, it very well could have been withheld to protect the interests of citizens.
So can you tell me in a case law around council members having unrestricted access?
Not at this point.
So was there any idea in fact in 83 that said that council members have unrestricted access?
It's from 1983 that there have been interpretations of that as well. In my discussions with the attorney's general's office, what they state is that requests for information in the official capacity can be either treated as open record requests or not. They don't necessarily follow the public information. So what the AG's office says is it's a discretion of the city whether they're going to give that information or not.
So how are we, as the governing body, supposed to make decisions, make a document, so can you make those decisions because the city wants to uphold them?
Sometimes individual council members' personal interests are counter to what the city's interests are.
My interests are the citizen's interests.
Sometimes they are not in line with what the city interests are, and so as city attorneys are taking care to protect the city and the city's interests.
So if all these are reported, which is treated actually as a city's, not any interest of the city council or justice, we should already say.
We are going way outside the agenda item as it's posted to talk about this specific rules of conduct and procedure. So if you're asking these questions in terms of how you want the wording changed, I would recommend you go back to.
I don't know why we're arguing this if everything's an open record request.
That's not what this section states. This makes it that if you're requesting information in your official capacity, then you have to follow the procedure. If you're making an open record request, you make an open record request.
Yes, I had a municipal attorney to write up my request, so I'm open for it. And they still are being treated as open record requests. So how does this form do anything to that?
I've already stated again, sometimes personal interests of city council members are counter to what the interests of the city are. In our discussions with the AG's office, they've indicated that we can treat them as open record requests.
Who makes the determination on what someone's interest is when I ask for information? Does that end the information?
Sometimes it's very clear what the issue is. I would direct you to our respective session items.
So let me get this straight. You have one of two choices. You either do an open record request, or you fill out this form and do a request for the official capacity amounted. So how do we resort to not having an open record request or having to do this? Do we set guidelines to say if we request, then it needs to be given? I mean, I don't understand it because they've never had issues in the past, but since November, December, everything has changed where all of a sudden, nobody gets anything. Everything is kept close to their hearts. So I don't understand why there's no information that needs to be given to the council in order to make a justified decision isn't being released to the council. And I mean, if I'm being honest, that's one of the reasons why I'm pushing to be forensic audit.
I mean, it's. You brought up a lot of issues there, I'm not sure for your question.
We need to be where everybody knows what's going on. We have nothing to hide. Why are we not being more transparent? I don't understand why the transparency isn't there. If there's nothing to hide, why can you not be transparent?
Like I said, there are circumstances where individual interests are counter to what the city's interests are.
And those ones are the ones that need to be discussed at that time. Everything else is not that subject, so it's irrelevant to your statement.
I really don't understand what you're saying. I just don't agree with you.
If I ask for documents, like for instance, the checks that the mayor has written since December of last year, why can I not receive those?
There's no reason why I couldn't.
Okay, well, I've asked for them multiple times and they have not been received.
Did you ask for them already?
Yes, I did.
Well, we're outside the item on the agenda. I know it's funny, I know it's funny to everyone here, but we are outside of the agenda. The Open Meetings Act requires that we discuss the items that are on the agenda.
Right, and this is on the agenda, and we're looking at investigation on how we need to make sure that this is not going to prevent or screw us later. So, I mean.
So to give you an example, if you personally would have requested something regarding your criminal investigation, law of investigations pending or prosecution pending, you have a personal interest that is counter to what the city's interest is, and the city's interest would be to prosecute that case. In those circumstances, that information should not be released because your interests counter the city's interests.
Okay, but the police records that I've requested multiple times, I am supposed to have access to, correct?
It depends on what the issue is. There are litigations pending, there's complaints filed, there's laws. There are litigations pending, there are complaints filed, there's lots of things pending. So we have to look at a request in terms of, is this official business from the city? Are you requesting it in their official capacity? Are there any personal interests that might counter what the city's interests?
Okay, so then how we word this to say if personal interest is involved? Because all other requests should not have to have an open request. That's absurd for a council member who has a timeline in order to make a decision to have to do an open request and then did five or six letters stating that we did not state the verbiage correctly from your office. So there again, we have no information in order to make the proper decision that needs to be made. So how do we word this right here to state that the only time that we need to request this official capacity or in our official capacity, if it is what you said, the... I can't even talk. The back and forth as far as the city having personal responsibility.
Personal responsibility. Personal interest.
Trying to be criminal or legal stuff. That kind of stuff I've actually seen.
If you look at 2.17E, it says, "Nothing herein shall prevent a city council member from requesting information consistent in accordance with the parameters of the Public Information Act. Nothing herein shall prevent the city from processing a request for information from a city council member that does not conform with Section 2.17 herein in accordance with the Public Information."
Right, but still, you're requesting us to do an open request. We shouldn't have to do that.
Are you saying now or are you talking about the rules of procedure, which is what's on...
I just asked you a few minutes ago, we had two options, an ORR or this official capacity. At any certain time, should a council member need to do an ORR? That is a timeline that we don't have. We need the materials so that we can do our due diligence in order to make the justified decision for the citizens. We don't have that information, we can't make that justified decision.
What is your question?
You're the fault of the question. You just said...
What is your question as it pertains to the rules of procedure?
We should not have to do an ORR.
So how do you propose that and you get the information?
We were requested unless there is some sort of technicality stating that it's an illegal issue or there's some verbiage that we're not allowed to see for like executive issues of some sort.
So this gives the city the discretion to say, no, we're going to treat this as a, in accordance with the Public Information Act in those circumstances?
Right, but the city says that on every item?
Currently, yes, because again, there's information that's being requested that is counter, being requested, or there's personal interests that are counter to the city's interests.
Okay, well, the checks that I asked for were not anything...
Again, we're not here to discuss specific open records requests. We're here to talk about the rules of procedure.
But that is an example of what I'm stating, that this is having an issue with me for.
Okay, let's get back on point to the rules of procedure.
Right, so how do we fix that?
I would be open to your request for revisions. I mean, I think these were drafted to make it clear when you're requesting information in your official capacity and when you're not. I'd be open to recommendations from you all for that.
So 2.17A says, "A council member's request made in his or her official capacity under Section 2.17 is not governed by the Public Information Act and as such is only enforceable by members of the city council." Can you explain what that means?
Like I said, when we talked to the AG's office, they said that a city council member's request is outside of the Public Information Act but that the city needs to be treated as a public information request.
I'm sorry to interrupt, but can you slow your words down so we can understand you?
So it says, "As such is only enforceable by members of the city council." So the city council will be making those determinations, not the...
No, basically, a violation of this rule would be enforced by the city council.
So what is the official policy to determine the intent and by who?
Typically, your legal department or your city attorney determines whether someone's personal interests are counter to what the city's interests are.
Okay, so is there a policy that states that? Like to give us some guidelines on where those borderlines are?
Yeah.
So what prevents the city from saying, is everything's an ORR at that point? Is there anything in that?
I'm going to leave it at this 2.17 altogether. I need to do some more research, and I know this is my last meeting, but I can always forward my information to other new council members if I need to. But with that being said, we really need a policy put in place that creates those borderlines of what is and isn't to your discretion.
Our job as a city attorney is to protect the city from liability and to protect the city from...
Right, so we still need those borderlines in writing, saying where you're going to say, hey, you crossed the line. So we needed it right. We have a bad habit of not putting things in writing. Everything that we do here needs to be in writing from this time forward. And I'm not saying writing after the fact. I'm saying writing before it is going on.
So the thing with this rules of procedure is that it's going to be difficult to legislate for each circumstance.
Well, you can give some sort of synopsis of where you're headed. I mean, you can't go in there blindly and say, hey, by the way, today I'm going to say this crosses the line. Hey, by the way, tomorrow I'm going to say this crosses the line. No, we need consistency. Have you not seen the issues that we've had here?
So consistency is in the Public Information Act because the Public Information Act states that everything is open except for these exceptions. And these exceptions and confidentiality laws fell out. What is confidential by law? What is accepted from disclosure? And things that are confidentially accepted from disclosure of things to protect the citizens?
Then I guess you have your basis to start your policy.
I'm not going to draft a policy, first of all, for the state.
But I thought your best interest was in the protection of the city.
I'm going to go by what the Public Information Act says. I'm not going to draft a specific policy in regards to the interpretation of the Public Information Act.
Again, I think we need to revisit 2-17 altogether.
So the updated request form also states it's being released by the internal ruling of the... I would like that to be adjusted.
Could you mind if that?
On the...
Okay.
So does anyone else have any questions about the rules of procedure?
No, I just continue to be revisiting.
I'll take a motion to table this item once again to revisit into the second meeting immediately.
I second that.
Marshal, with the Senate. To tell you the Senate. On... Castle?
Yes.
On the wire?
Yes.
On the record?
Yes.
Yes.
Record?
Yes.
I would say, discuss and consider possible action proposed from the local newspaper and on the City of Goddard, Texas website, an RFP for an external forensic audit by a third party on all City of Goddard finances, City of Goddard Police Department and City of Goddard Court Players, which all submissions will need to be mailed, emailed to all council members for further review.
So obviously, this is mine. I have... I have typed up some things that I think needs to be in this RFP. First off, in... So first off, it says, "We are seeking qualified professionals to perform forensic and investigative accounting services for the period [blank] through [blank]. Respondents will be required to demonstrate their experience in providing these types of services on other public sector investigations. Forensic and investigative services on an analysis and examination of all vendor remnants of in excess of [blank] to determine if, number one, proper purchasing and procurement protocols were upheld; number two, conflict of interest disclosures filed and executed; number three, contract amounts authorized; number four, bids proposals solicited; number five, vendor due diligence performed. Additionally, reviewing payroll records and accounting entries related to payroll; reviewing documentation to support contemporaneous accrual and record keeping for the patient's sick PTO time; review court administrator reports and activities; review all police investigations and their outcomes; review police department reports and activities; review all can do complaints and any open investigations." Now, mind you, this is just a draft that I drafted up, so I am open for anyone's opinion on it, no changing of this.
A forensic audit does not do a forensic audit on police department criminal investigations. There's no authority.
Okay, that's fine, you can...
Well, I don't have a copy of what you...
So in my opinion, I think we need to go back ten years just to get a complete picture of what's gone on in the past versus what's going on right now. So I'm proposing to go to 2013 to 2023. Anybody else have any opinions on that?
I would also leave out that police department reports and activities is incredibly vague. And again, the police department should not be subject to... Their reports are written, so many of those reports can be confidential by law. For instance, if they deal with juveniles, if they deal with pending and open investigations or prosecutions. This is highly outside of the norm. Or an audit of that would be outside of the norm.
Okay, so if we wanted to know about the police investigations and their outcomes, who would we need to contact for that?
You can give an open records request. I mean, it's not the prerogative of the city council. General operations of the police department, yes, but specific investigations are the prerogative of the council.
Okay, well, I'm okay with leaving this out. It's that we want to other people to do that first. I know that we are a small seat, so I think that we should make a small amount as far as vendor redundancies. Because we don't know what's going on over here. We don't know how to, again, analyze a dollar amount for that spot. Are you guys opposed to say either two fifty or five hundred?
I think one thing to consider is if the city even has the funds to request such an audit. The city is currently in an audit, an ongoing audit for the last fiscal year.
This is totally different from that one. So I actually did an analysis of our budget, and we do have the funds to do this as long as the budget has been utilized and reconciled correctly the past six months.
We have paid employees in the last six months. Our majority of employees, so pretty sure we don't pay any money.
Employees have been paid, I'm not ever going to...
Talk about the vacancies.
We're not paying a city secretary eighty thousand dollars.
Oh.
Not paying a city manager eighty thousand dollars.
Clerk.
I'm sorry, clerk, eighty thousand dollars. There's money in our budget that is definitely to be used this year.
Is that money budgeted for a forensic audit? Because if it's not, then you're acting outside of your budget.
We can do it in amendment. There can be amendments.
Right, yeah.
So, but first, like you said, we need this to be done. And I've had this on the agenda for approximately nine times now. So we need to get it on, and we need to get it in the paper, and then we get it done. So I don't know where the roadblock keeps happening and why it keeps happening. But according to the rest of this document, is there anything else that's out of line?
All pending complaints and open investigations.
Yeah, I already crossed that out.
The last three bullets.
Yep. So otherwise, everything else is good?
I've just been provided this today, so...
Same.
I'm sorry?
I got all my documents today, so.
I can't make a legal determination, although this needs to be.
Let them baller in.
So, are you guys okay with a dollar not two fifty?
Oh, I'm sorry, what's this dollar amount for?
So, any remittances in excess of two fifty?
No.
Is in accordance of all of the bullets. I mean, we don't have a whole lot of big ticket, ticket items, from what I understand. So, but it's not like we're a seventy million dollar budgeted city. We can't put a fifty thousand dollar marker on there, or we have nothing come up, and it would be a waste of time.
So, maybe say all vendor remittances. What exactly is that purpose? Because we don't know what vendors we use.
Yeah, so this is actually going to pull those.
So, are there some card that we have used in the past that may be considered?
Yes.
Is that for each transaction, if they bought something for fifty dollars?
Hmm, two fifty.
The scope of this isn't set out, does it cover the entire city?
The agenda item states, ah.
But this is your RFP, this is what people see, so are you wanting it for the entire city?
Well, yeah. I mean, what else would I want to, we don't have an inner city, do we?
No, I mean, it should specify that a little bit.
Well, like I said, this is a draft for everybody to have something to grow off of.
Right.
If there's something somebody else wants, or they don't even want all of these things, I'm open for negotiation. But the only way that we're all going to have a justified decision in this is if we actually talk, not just me.
I agree.
I know we gave this sooner, but I was running out of time. I literally wrote these up in my notes and then hurried up and printed them. So, are you guys good for the services for the period two thousand thirteen through twenty twenty-three?
I would rather get the, the start there, get the information back from the, people who might want to do this for us, and see what the cost is, because that's it. We have the money, because we have the spending, but do we need to go back that far? I don't know. And if we don't go back that far, go back eight years, seven years, six years, what's the cost of doing that? But by now, just get it out and see what happens.
All right, so are any of these bullets, are any of these bullets things that you don't think we need? Or do you think that we need to add some more? I mean, I, I'd love some input on this.
Kathleen brings up a good point. The city keeps things by retention schedules, local government retention schedules. And so, some of this information might not even be there back to that time. All our retention schedules are at the Texas State Library and Archives, which is their general. There are certain schedules that apply to different departments and different records, just depending on what they are.
So, I'm actually a retention manager in my apartment right now. Most of these items are a ten-year retention. There's very few that are seven, and very few that are two. If that's the case, they'll come back and say, hey, we've got a retention problem.
Right.
But they're always in digital archives. Well, they're supposed to be.
Well, this ought to tell us, like, our handover is out of date. We have no list of items we own or the city uses. Would it tell us, would it go into that data information so that we can, do a better job, so the city can do a better job? Or is this just money?
Well, I mean, what it will do is probably extract a list of things that we've purchased, and any conflicts within those lists that we've purchased. With those lists, you can actually justify to see if there are any assets on there that needs to be included into an asset list. But it will give us that data in order to create those lists.
What is it meant by vendor due diligence performed? You're gonna have to specify that.
Okay, so vendor due diligence, did they fill out a vendor form? Did they submit all of the vendor credentials as far as, usually you have to have tax forms, what is it, W nine, all of that kind of thing?
And when you say contract amounts authorized, do you, what do you mean by that?
Okay, so contract amounts authorized by whomever is authorized to prove them. So, were they approved or were they not approved? If they were approved, who proved them, and did they have the capability to repeat them? So, I guess by authorized first now.
Do you guys have any other questions added this taking from now?
Is that satisfied with the way this is written?
No.
I think that it would be looked into by you more than what we have here. I personally don't think a forensic audit is necessary, but I'd like to see that you look into this before we do anything on it.
So, we are approving the posting of the RFP according to the agenda. So, the posting can happen, but this draft that you have here, you can go back and review, and then submit it to us for final review, and then once that review is approved, then we can put this in where it needs to go.
When it gets posted, it has to be posted in the final one, I guess. So, it can be reviewed and revised if the council can accept it.
And how long does it take you to review?
It depends on when we get it and when you need to buy.
Well, you're getting it right now.
Well, the council hasn't taken action yet.
Well, I'm just saying hypothetically, you're getting it right now, so you've already got it in your hand, how long would it take you to review?
I would need to look at it to see what would need to be added, because there's some general boilerplate language that must be added for any article or article.
But according to context, the directed context, is there anything out of line that you see?
Not necessarily out of line, I think it's incredibly vague, if you, if you had to ask my specific opinion. I, I think it needs to be more specific than, you know, bids proposals solicited. What does that mean? Does that mean were they solicited when they were required to be solicited? It's not clear, so I, I think it's, it's going to be hard for a vendor to, or someone, to form these audits to determine what they're actually doing.
Okay, so I would like to place a motion to post in the local newspaper and on the City of Gobbly, Texas website, a RFP for external, external court and ZIC audit by a third party on all City of Gobbly financials and City of Gobbly court records, with review of this document by the city attorney, to be posted within the next thirty days.
I'll say again.
We have a motion in second.
Yes. What are the posting or RFPs to get something in the newspaper? Why do they need to publish?
We follow them at least three days, then we get options. I mean, our corporation is.
On the wire end?
No.
Yeah.
Yes. Yes.
All right, carries.
Thank you.
We need session one.
As stated, you would need a budget amendment to authorize this kind of expenditure. Can we get down the agenda, please? And also, on that same agenda, will you add the, and into this document to be discussed?
So, when you post an RFP or RQ, you're actually posting what you want, you're posting the scope. If you want this to come back to the council, unless there's a third meeting, it's not going to be able to be classified. Before it's posted.
I guess we'll have a special meeting.
Here we go.
All right, we're going out of date. Discuss and consider for possible action adopting a resolution to hire Brad Anderson as interim city administrator.
So, is he here?
Yes.
Is that you?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Sorry. Okay, so I actually added this item. As a lot of you are aware, we are coming up on budget spending season. We all, we need to get a move on it. Right now, I did not see, or actually, I requested the application for administrator multiple times. I finally received them today. So, I only had two to go off of, because I posted my own posting to kind of recruit somebody in that seat.
Did the council authorize you to recruit city administrators on behalf of this thing?
It's our duty to do so.
Did the council authorize you to do that?
I didn't do it officially, I did it on my own.
Go ahead.
Okay. So, anyhow, I received two, two resumes. One of them backed out and submitted their resume for the full-time administrator, which left one resume. So, the resume that I got was for Mr. Brad Anderson. He also submitted two letters of recommendation from highly, highly noted people. So, I'd like to, to give him a chance. Unfortunately, even though the item was on the agenda, there was no resolution or contract. You actually get it or not?
No, you asked me to draft one yesterday at three thirty, and I told you I can't do that.
But also, at the last meeting, I stated if you stole something of that, of that content on the agenda, that you should do due diligence and move forward.
We cannot draft an agreement without knowing the terms of the agreement. As I stated in response to your request for me to draft something at three thirty yesterday, this process for choosing a city administrator is outside the realm.
But this is an interim, it's not a city administrator.
Interim, whether it be interim or city administrator. There are actually some legal issues that I need to discuss with the council in regards to this item, so I would like to request to take the council into executive session.
We will go with the executive session.
Yes. Mayor, we need to announce the reason for executive session. So, executive session, the council will be, are temporarily adjourning the regular session to go into closed or executive session pursuant to section five fifty-one oh seven one consultations with attorney consultation with interim city attorney to seek advice of said attorney, and section five fifty-one oh seven four discussion on the appointment. Employment evaluation of free assignment duties, discipline, or dismissal of a public officer or employee regarding action item D, discuss and consider for possible action adopting a resolution to hire Brad Anderson as interim city administrator. Go ahead.
So, we're going to turn into executive session.
Oh, people said your beard looked nice on video. People said your beard looked nice.
Oh, people said your beard looked nice on video. People said your beard looked nice.
We're going to go from the second, take the line of D. All the talking?
Yes.
There he is.
Yes.
Roger.
Yeah. Yes.
I'm sorry, ma'am.
Yes.
Motion, dear. We move to the line of D. Discuss and consider for possible action and/or direction of the city staff regarding a roadway maintenance plan slash program. To identify and prioritize public roadways and rights and ways within the city limits and need to prepare or maintain.
I'm going to have to pause me down.
Did the, did that stop you a hold of you Catholic or A C about some donation of material?
That's totally on topic. We don't talk about this.
It's road repairs.
Specific road repairs?
Yes, specific road repairs. So.
And then it's regarding what, sir?
Regarding some, uh, mill asphalt.
No, I'm not really making much.
Okay. So, um, I'm wondering what our, you know, protocol is as far as the road repairs go right now. Like what do we do right now in order to repair our roads?
We have a lot of color that we use for several, um, smaller piles and one bigger pile. We stood up a little bit and we're after I'm told by the public works guys. We also. Joshua, two Joshua has told us that they will come help us. We may have no work for their road repair crew. We would have to pay them there. But.
How often do we use them?
We have not used them. Because in the past, they haven't had the slack time. But apparently when they called, they called one of our employees who's no longer employed here. And he told me, well, you need to, he had time to deal with it. So I'm going to get back in contact with him.
You have all the, you have all of the contact information?
For Joshua? No, but I can get it. I know people there that have called.
Um, and how do you assess which roads need repair, which ones do not? And do you address any calls that come in from citizens when they. Offer in advice as far as roads that need repair?
We have city people left to check every time we've got to call them through. But some places need to be backed. And we're always in our city. We're checking to make sure that they're working our city. And we know five county or there we can call.
Do we keep a log of everyone that called in with those types of requests?
I, I don't know.
We haven't been, but we do that in case.
Do we have any software that will, um, give the ability for our citizens to request online? Like, is there something we can add to the website perhaps?
I don't think we have any software regarding that. I could see what software we have. I could see if that, if that, if that ability. But I'm not sure if we have anything specific for that.
How do they take their requests?
Uh, they usually just email or call.
And then once they email and call, who does that request go to?
I normally send it to the public works department. And I usually notify the mayor's office.
Okay. And how many people do we currently have in public works department?
One.
One. Okay. Is that a certified public works permit or, or a public works employee, or is that somebody who does all of that, their odd jobs?
Does pretty much everything.
You'll also want to involve your city engineer if it's anything beyond, um, filling potholes.
Right.
To analyze if, you know, you're dealing with a resurfacing project or that sort of thing. Those larger projects funds to hit a certain, um, amount is considered a public works project and they require.
So if we were to offer something that gives the citizens the ability to, um, request a road repair online. Or put in some sort of, um, request to say, hey, this is, this is bad. We need to get it done. Do we have to have that as an agenda item to accept that, or is that something we can do in house?
You don't, council doesn't need to take action to, uh, do minor repairs like filling potholes. But if you're considering resurfacing a roadway, like I said, there's a good process that needs to be followed. Uh, and, um, contracts need to be awarded formally by the council.
Well, I'm talking about the actual, like, request. So if we want to include a way for the, um. Citizens to request online so that they don't have to fill up our telephone lines or send emails. And then it actually can be drafted into a report. Do we have to have that as an agenda item, or is that something that they can do in house?
They can do that in house.
Okay. So can we look into that?
I'm sorry, ma'am.
Can we look into something like that? Okay. So I actually asked for citizens to send in requests on roads that need repaired. Um, a lot of them are very concerned with their tax dollars not being utilized correctly because all of their roads are not in good shape. Um, if you look at the spreadsheet that I created, links is the, probably the one that has the most hits. Um, I had a few pictures that I tried to print, but it was not working out for me, uh, because it was going off of a page. Uh, so I didn't include those. But anyone that has ventured down links knows exactly what I'm talking about. Um, so. I guess that would be one of the first ones that I would like to see completed as far as a project. And, um, that would probably need some resurfacing as bad as it is. So is there anyone we can get that, um, on the next agenda?
Well, today is for discussion for you guys to prioritize and to discuss possibly, uh, a program. How you're going to prioritize these projects. Cause things, um, what you and I discussed via email was, you know, things to consider are the city's budget. Again, any expenditure for road repairs, to that extent have to be budgeted.
Okay. And what is the donation or my?
So it's a convoluted made for text op to give us and you get it asking. It's near the bus farm.
Oh, Rooster Road?
Yes.
So Rooster Road was another one that, and if you look, it's the first one in the blue below the yellow. So, um, will they have enough to do that whole road as far as on the tour?
So it'll be just, from my understanding, it's related material and they can't, they can only donate to a municipality and they can't donate to an ISD. So it's. Going through us to donate to them for around the bus stop area.
That's something that will be on the agenda, accepting the donation.
Okay. Um, so we'll just go through this list real quick. We also have Turner Avenue, um. Hightower Road, internal road deterioration and needing a water drainage. Water pond would cause issues for the new subdivision. Need a band-aid and avoid finding a solution in ISD. So from what I gather, there, that area is a high flood plain or something because there's no way to drain the water. So the water is actually sitting on top of the road whenever we did those floods. When that happened, it deteriorates the road, causing all of that, um, infrastructure issue.
If anybody in the public wants to look at this list that she's referring to, I have a copy here.
So then we have, um, of course, group, uh, Bruce, but, uh. So do you think that that one is already taken care of, or should we still keep that in the running as far as road repairs being re-done?
As for actual Bruce Road, no, they're just, they're the, the ISD for right around the bus farm.
Okay. So then there's Bruce. Um, from what I had received, there's a lot of water tears due to bus travel. And the kids walked to and from school. Now, the way I would break this is that number one. If it's health hazard, uh, health and safety hazard. Number two, um, infrastructure. And then number three, uh, you know, my citizens request. So if it's going to damage, um. Or damage, if it's going to cause issues as far as like tripping kids or, you know, not a safe travel to school. Then I feel like that's a high priority. If it's, um, infrastructure damage to where. If this continues to happen, not only are we going to have to fill out a pothole, but we're going to have to repair the entire road, which. In return will cost more tax dollars. Um, so then Windell. And all of the rest of these are just basically potholes that need to be filled in. Um, I didn't venture out there. I didn't have time. Um, but of course, you know, public works can get that. Um, so we've got Windell Drive, Gobbly Avenue, Rail Road, uh, Avenue. And Rail Road, um, they, the information that I got, um, is a little more damaging than Gobbly Avenue. So that is, um, a top priority in the moderate concern side of it. Um, Holman Street, minimal concern. There's only a few potholes in there. Um, County Road one zero zero one, that's not the entire road. It's just bits and pieces. Um, County Road eleven twenty-eight, she was very concerned. Uh, I don't remember what she said, but. The way she said it was that she had to basically drive in a zigzag in order to get through that road. Um, Field Street, Fifth Street, First Street, FM twenty-three thirty-one. I know that that is a tax that road, but in the GIS, um, hog software. It states that the city maintains it on these addresses. So, I mean. Take this with a grain of salt as far as this data because I exported it from the GIS. Um, and it say, it states that all of these roads are city maintained. So all these updates, if we haven't updated ourselves, then they're not going to be updated in the system. Um.
If it's twenty-three thirty-one is a text offer update, you already have time to redo it with sidewalks.
Okay, the whole road?
From the county line all the way to one seventy-one, I believe.
Okay. And then, um, one seventy-one is also a spare road. So do we have any ideas as far as if they have any, um, uh. Agreements for that?
Yes.
Yes.
They get a super two.
They're going to bring in the long passing lanes.
We go by that.
Well, I think all the way from Weatherford, I know from Crescent to Cleveland, but I think from Weatherford.
The project is from the county line in Crescent to Highway one seventy-four in Cleveland. It'll be a super two, which is like two mile long passing lanes alternating each way.
Okay. And then, uh, we also have Hadley Road. There was minimal concern. There are basic potholes. Uh, Nelson, same second, seventh, and sixth, as well as third, were also, um, minimal concern. Uh, I have the rest of the roads in the city listed, but I did not have any complaints on them. However, that does not mean that there's not any issues there. Um. When PD or fire or something is out of bounds, do they ever? Do you guys ever, uh, give us any sort of correspondence as far as, hey, we've got bad road over here. What's our, what's our plan?
I'm sure they've dealt with the works on this a little bit, but maybe in the past, can you?
Yes, we would usually tell the public works when it's out and there's potholes on East Gobbly Avenue. It's bad. We used to retract it and stuff. Reinforcement, that's public works.
Right.
So.
Okay. So as far as concern goes, anyone having input on where we need to start with these?
Well, I know we patched some spots on Link's Drive and there's some.
You said?
Very, fairly close to links that have been patched, but they weren't very good patched because. We just didn't have the equipment. We filled it with coal paint. But I drive it several times every day. I didn't know they were on Link's Drive. Seemed like it was a good, I haven't been having a Dodge pot. Now, there's a couple of those spots where. I don't drive them like so many other drivers. I use a car that I can't stand on less. Well, that, that do work with them. You're.
So is that something that we can have Joshua look into helping us fix?
I've got a contact and to see if we still have somebody available. That was, they called midweek and I didn't find out about it. Until Friday or Saturday that they called. One of our public works employees that's no longer employed here. Probably in that time, best of all of us. And that was it.
Who is our, who is our public works, um, employee?
He's not anymore.
But you said, yeah, you said you had another one.
Yes, we did.
So we can hire him?
Yes, we hired him and.
What's his name?
His name is Christopher.
Dixon.
Dixon. And we're looking to hire another one who is currently working in the fire department. And has some, some licensure for West Clark.
Westing.
So, so that will help us out. Give somebody qualified and somebody that can get qualified. Plus we've got to have a couple of people thi- this time of year because of all the bowling.
So does Christopher Dixon have any experience with road repairs?
I believe he has maybe a little bit, but not much. He's a young guy and he hasn't worked. But the other guy has because he told me he could, he could use some heavy equipment, you know.
Like they had stairs and stuff like that?
Yeah. And, and I'd say he's got some licensure already and he's working on it.
Okay. So going forward. What would be the ideal? Situation as far as identifying and correct prioritizing. These city roadways and highways within the city limits in order to efficiently. Create a plan to repair them in a timely basis.
If I may suggest, one thing you and I talked about before when we were discussing the science of golden agenda is that. I think council will also need input from yours, not only your public works staff member, but your city engineer so that. Uh, he or she can look at the existing conditions on these roadways that you've identified. Um, and that they can determine whether that it needs to be approved, like a resurfacing, like I said, whether it could be patched with just pothole repairs, that sort of thing. And but, but what the extent of the repairs need to be done. And then after we looking at that, you look at a case by case basis to see if funds are available. To do the repairs that need to be done, whether it be from a donation, whether it be from, um, you know, contracting Joshua, whoever. Um, just reading the email that I sent you. The worst case scenario is that a total, a road needs to be totally reconstructed and that's pretty costly. But, um. Um, you know, obviously to repair and reconstruct a road is more costly than actually doing maintenance. So.
Well, have we even used our budget for road repair?
I, I don't know what your budget is.
I mean, because there hasn't been any roads repaired. So we should have a pretty full budget.
Now, number fact that they have repaired supplies in the last month or so. They used up almost a full. Love. They still got a little bit of the coal mix left that they didn't use yet.
So that's happening. I actually have been in this department for a very long time at a certain point in my life. So a, let's just say a ton of coal mix does not cost that much money.
It's having the employees to actually go out and use the coal mix. It's not.
Correct. So what is the solution to get these employees out there to do it?
First, we had to hire, but we did have one guy and he was busy fixing links, doing West Clark.
Okay, is that job posted?
That job's been fitted.
So then we have to analyze the having four.
So we can prove hiring an additional person for public works, I think, too, so we have Christopher Dixon.
Right.
So have we, do we have applications for that public position?
Yes. He was a firefighter, but he had, he found out about the public works, wanted to, had experience, had some licenses, and wanted to take that job.
So that's the only application we've gotten?
Yeah, it's more than that, what she said, well.
I think we have one other.
For, for public works.
But he's the licensed one, right?
Yes.
Yes.
The one that you're calling?
One, yeah.
Okay. So then this guy is, this Christopher Dixon is not licensed, so he's doing the odds and ends and more, more than likely the road repairs, is that correct?
Well, he helped with the road repair and the other guy was here. But he's only been here for a week.
Oh, it's been about.
Two weeks, right?
Two, maybe, yeah, about two weeks.
So then he knows what he's doing when he has to fill those potholes. Let me ask you this, he works forty hours, correct? Is that right?
Well, that's.
What does he do in the forty hours that he is at work?
He works, he mows, he goes to West Clark frequently, he does all that kind of stuff. And when, and when he has a chance, then he does other things to get. Some of the stuff has to be done for the state, federal road, the West Clark and all that kind of stuff, so.
So is there?
But he works, every day.
So is there any way that we could take possibly two to four hours a week out of his full schedule and put him on road repairs? Because the longer these wait, the more it's gonna cost us the things.
I'll talk to him and think, let, try to figure out where the places are and how much time that it's gonna take.
I have a list right here. I have a list of all of the repairs that need to be done. So I've already done the homework for you guys. All you have to do is do the work of the man maker, that's it. Um, where?
You need input from your engineer too, to see whether.
If it's just a pothole, then it needs to be built. But that's what I'm saying, two to four hours a day filling potholes.
Right.
The citizens have been yelling about this for at least a year that I know of, for the same roads and they've never been touched.
Yeah, I don't know, you know, just looking at this, the extent of the Link's Drive, whether that needs resurfacing or not, but.
Well, that one we're definitely gonna have the engineer out there to look at. And the same with all these other very concerns. Um, but like these moderate concerns where it states lots of potholes needing to be filled in, that can throw some hot, hot eggs or cold mix in and be done with it, like.
You're not gonna be able to fix Glendale with some cold mix?
Glendale now, okay.
No, but cold sacks can maybe resurface on one side, there's potholes, there are potholes, there are potholes that didn't fill on top of each other. Um, East Godley, we talked about two years ago, I think it was gonna have to be dug down two to three feet. It was gonna be a multi-million dollar project.
Would it be possible that, um, I could provide this list to the city engineer and then he could come up with a plan on what we need to do as far as that and then some of the other roads? How, how many hours would you want him to devote to this per week, um, because?
Right now, I don't care how it's done or if it's done, I just want it done. These guys made for these roads to be repaired with their hard earned money, we need to return their favor.
Maybe three or four hours per week, maybe, uh, does that sound acceptable?
How about go with him and ask him how long it's gonna take him on that basis as far as what we need?
Okay.
And see what the, the diameter is as far as time goes.
Okay.
And see how long it takes them to, to analyze this and make sure that we're on the right track of getting things done efficiently, correctly, and in a timely manner.
Yes, ma'am, um, so did you wanna start with Godley Avenue or? Cause y'all, I know y'all said Link's was pretty bad and Glendale's apparently.
Well, I see a safety risk with Bruce Road. Um, and Mike, uh, you've been pretty involved in these roads, I have not. So the past, what have you seen that eats the most?
We need to hire a third working visiting employee.
Seriously?
Seriously.
Yeah. But these minimal concerns, I, I feel like our public works guy can take care of those. I mean.
So it's not as simple as don't hit the cold mix at all.
Yeah, you have to hate it out, yeah.
Too, there's, you're supposed to compact it. Our guys in the past have never compacted it. Link told me directly that little cars will drive over it, it'll get compacted. That's not exactly how it works, but that's how it's been done in the past. A lot of our issues have come from the past, and amount of water leaks we've had. And whenever they fix those leaks, they just throw some face rock on it and never fix it. Then as you drive over it, whenever it rains, that coagulate gets slowly in roads and roads and roads. Please don't hurt me after the beginning, but we will probably have to pass a bond to fix our roads there that disrepair. You're talking tens of millions of dollars.
So according to the board, so it should be engineer who cares towards first.
Well, traditionally, for road repairs, you would do what has the most car count, so you heard it. Ones that run through town, a few nights seventeen, and Pearson. So, Graham and Godley Railroad was redone a couple of years ago. All three of those roads were done a few years before that, but they're already bad again. Now you start talking about some of these streets like Seventh Street or, I mean, I drive down mine, I'm pretty sure I'm gonna have to replace my suspension soon.
I'll do techs on three, you can hunt, so I just.
I don't know exactly what our interview is with Joshua, or how much we pay them. Better be, but who must to hire an additional person? Who can just concentrate on this or use them, whatever's more cost efficient. They do have a machine that lays asphalt, so.
You had two applications, is that what you said? And we actually approved to do two additional positions, right? Other than what Hunter was, so there should have been a total of three, is that correct?
So the next position is the director of the board.
So the one with the license could potentially be the director. But I haven't seen an application, so I don't know what the qualifications are.
You don't have any qualifications, he started, he's working on it, but he didn't.
But what are the qualifications of that other applicant, do, do you call?
He had no experience in public works, I think he worked more in construction area.
Okay, so he did repair some roads.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was gonna say, it's two different things.
We keep hiring inexperienced people and we get inexperienced people.
True.
And other than.
I honestly don't even think he had a, a driver's license, so.
So do we, how, okay, so I know in past commitment that I've been at, at cities and at counties, there's a program where trustees actually come out and assist for free as a, like, plan from, you know, the county. What is the criteria for that and would that be something that we would qualify for?
I guess can be, I'm not aware of any of those programs here.
Yeah. I don't know whether they.
Do you know?
We're gonna have to get along with commissioners, account commissioners, and see.
But is that feasible?
You'll have to look at what their program parameters are first.
I know they have trustee inmates that go around for precincts. That's something we're gonna have to get hold of our, our commissioner.
But I'm saying, then if we do the trustee program to put a demo in the yards and stuff, or the, the land, then that takes the work away from our public works and the public works can't actually work on the roads.
It is, yes.
So is that something that you would be willing to look into?
I can't.
Okay, please do. And you do have the manpower for that, because I know that you have to have, you know, one guy per ex trustees.
Well, they have actually, uh, chalers that are putting around.
Oh, okay.
So we wouldn't have to have the manpower to do it, they're all, it's a group group of dogs.
Okay, so would you think you can have any correspondence back on that?
Start tomorrow.
Perfect, and will you include all of us B C C?
Yes.
Thanks.
I recommend that you don't do that, because that could be a, a meeting. If you guys start having a conversation via email, all of you are, at least a forum.
That's why I said B C C.
Either, either way, but if you still talk to each other on email, could be considered a meeting. Receiving information could be considered a meeting.
That's what I directed to you earlier, sorry. Okay. So that's one statement we can look into or isolation.
Here, I got some.
No, um, we just need to get some road repairs done. This has gone on way too long and we just need to be a little bit more proactive in the things that actually need to be done. Um, and I know that we haven't had much manpower, but that is still in our hands. And we do have, um, the ability to give that manpower, it's just we have to be motivated to get them.
And as I said before, we do still have a lot of people calling in potholes and road problems that are not in our city.
Correct, but then.
And we can't do anything.
Yeah, so then what do you do when you are in that position? Do you give them the information that they need to be?
Yes.
Sure, but?
Yes.
Okay, that's perfect then.
We tell them, call the commissioner, call half the state.
Okay. So just to recap, we're gonna look into the, uh, trustee program. We're going to talk to the engineer, ask him how many hours he thinks it is to assess all of this. And then we're going to see if there's any hours that are public works and a lot to the road repairs itself. Right?
Yes, but it's not like we're trying to convince you. When we just go out and put cold mix in, even if you dig down, that's a temporary fix. At some point, we're gonna have to have major work done on the streets, like we did on ones that were repaid and stuff. You just have to understand, number one, we're not gonna get them all fixed in a week or two.
Correct.
Number two, the ones we get fixed, by the time they get around to some more, they'll be getting bad again.
Not if they do them properly.
Okay, I'll tell them that.
I mean, if we're just going to give a standing to a whole, why even do it? We just need to get them done.
You're not how we're for, you guys, so go out and do the best job they can, train their gun.
We need to hire more of them, I think.
Exactly.
Man.
I think we need to ha- uh, we need to hire our expectations. The employees are supposed to be held at a particular standard. If they're not following the standards and they're not meeting that criteria, then it's time to reassess the situation and make sure that the, the situation is being taken care of, that we need to be taking care of, if not, we're just wasting tax dollars on something that's irrelevant. I mean, if you're not doing a job that's doing it with any justification, then you are not in the right spot and we don't need to have you. So I mean, point blank, if you're not doing the job, you take the proper procedures, you teach them how to do the job, and they still don't know how to do the job, then maybe they need some schooling. If not, there is a proper procedure in the H R division where you do write-ups. And after your second or third write-up, then you need to find another job and we need to hire somebody else. Point blank, we need to keep our employees accountable for the job they're doing. Not just to go out and waste taxpayers' money by going to Sonic five times a day or hanging out at the fire station because he likes somebody or, you know, going over there and just driving your vehicle around the park a few times just to look like you're on the clock. Those are not the things that need to be focused on. We need to be focused on taking care of these things that citizens want. And need. I mean.
So right now, who, who does the public works employee, who's their director?
We don't have.
Okay, so who's their supervisor, who do they report to?
I don't know.
I just, uh, report to, to tell them, yes, I'm gonna go do something. There's a, we do have a, a contractor that does the advanced stuff. But I tell them, hey, it's time to mow the park, mow the park. This time of year, that's a big thing. So the, the guy that's qualified to run it mower, even though he's not qualified to do some other things, he's qualified to do the mower, so the park gets mowed and the street get mowed and the grass oversat.
Also, Mike out there doing the, not too long ago, I mean, our, I, I'm a brother.
So they have no accountability system?
We are going way outside of what this item is supposed for. And they consider a plan and program to prioritize away.
What we're leading to, we need to find, we need to assess the situation before we can create the plan.
Let's get there, because you guys are going in, out on a muddy trail, talking about specific, uh, employment decisions.
Okay, so let's take your example of railroad tracks. For some reason, we've always been next to them, that's not our property.
Again, off topic, would you get back on topic in terms of the prioritizing public rights way and, and roadways for maintenance and repair?
Along the railway of the railroad, we are going to have to do a lot of drainage that comes all the way from Link's, all the way down there to the highway. So once again, before I interrupt it, we are going to have to look at. Y'all are all.
We don't know up next to railroad tracks, because that's their property.
Yes, we do.
Who doesn't? Our hand that not does, we're not driving motors. Now, on railroad, across railroad street, that's city property, yeah, they belong to that.
I'm not talking about they do out behind the fire department, I'm talking along the railroad tracks. They mow it, I've seen them mow it, I've asked them why they mow it.
You all are way off topic. Again, this is supposed to be discussed and considered for possible action or direction to city staff regarding a roadway maintenance plan or program to identify and prioritize public roadways and rights away within the city limits in need to repair or handle maintenance. plan or program to identify and prioritize public roadways and rights away within the city where it's in need to repair or handle maintenance. Sounds like he's looking for labor hours to do that.
I wish I had an idea for next year to hire an additional public works employee. And no one would be hired before then, because obviously we're not choosing qualified people. And we are next meeting Saturday.
No, I'm sorry.
Are you gonna do it Saturday? Okay, next Tuesday.
Tuesday's fine, Saturday's just deal with Howard and the director.
So I guess we're not really doing anything with this item.
As long as these guys do the things that they say they're gonna do, then I think we should be in a good spot and we can revisit this. But if you're gonna say you're doing it, I expect you to do it. Not like things that have been done in the past where you tell me you're gonna do it, then as soon as the meeting's over, your mind changes and you send me an email and says, oh, well, I can't do that. No, moving forward, we need to do the things that we say that we're going to do. So if you're going to do those things, then I will be done with this item. But if you're not, you need to tell me now so we can come up with another solution. I have your word? I have your word?
Yep.
I have your word?
Where else we gonna have to work?
Calling Joshua.
They work every day.
She wants to know if you're gonna call Joshua, that's what she wants to know.
You're out of order.
She's just trying to help you.
I was just helping you, it's cool.
She's out of order.
And Steve, will you please call Joshua and ask if they have any availability? Also, can you please speak with the, I, what's his name?
Chris.
Yes, Chris. Find a solution as far as the time that he works and if there's any availability for him to set aside X amount of numbers a week in order to do road repairs. I understand that some of these repairs will not wa- last a long time. However, actions speak louder than words. And if you're actually out there doing something, the citizens will see that you're doing something, that band-aid will prevent further damage until we can get to it to do the big job that we need to do.
Yes.
Thank you.
Ready?
Yes.
Item F, discuss, consider, make possible action with good due to the next regular city council meeting. I'm moving forward to take care of that.
Put it on the minutes, put it in the notes.
Your next regular council meeting is scheduled for the sixteenth. Um, as I told you last meeting, there's no one available from our office to attend the sixteenth of May. Um, we can attend the fifteenth, the seventeenth. Um, they're gonna call a special call meeting. That is a special call, this item is on the agenda to have the right next regular meeting. You can come the fifteenth? I'm sorry, you said you could come the fifteenth? Yes. It would be a special call meeting if it's not on Friday.
Yeah, our regular meetings...
Your, your last action that you took was... So we're gonna have to do it that way. Your last action that you took was to have your regular council meetings on the first and third Tuesday. Um, so the next regular scheduled meeting would be May sixteenth. Like I said, no one's available from our office, they're gonna have a special call.
And we need a, we need an attorney present in order to have me?
No.
Not necessarily, but it's advisable that you do.
I don't think it's necessary, I mean...
I do.
I mean, we can't meetings without a city attorney in the past. As long as we don't have any executive items, there isn't why we can't hold our regular meeting on a date. I mean, if this was in fact an issue in the contract that was signed between said attorney and the city by the mayor, it should have been negotiated a little better and not agreed upon. Because you don't meet our criteria as far as availability.
I'm telling you what we told the city throughout, we have no one available on the third Tuesday we have prior to the event.
So, I mean, I feel like we need to keep it at a stand and first and third. We literally just voted on this in the last meeting, so it just needs to stay the same.
Well, it's not part of this issue, it means, uh, on schedule, the next regular city council meeting.
Right, which is Tuesday to sixteenth, as stated.
And I prefer not to have one without a city attorney.
Then I guess you should have hired a city attorney. I make a motion to schedule our next regular city council meeting for May sixteenth.
I second.
Councilman?
Yes.
No.
No.
Yes?
Yes.
Okay, let's talk the last item. We need to make a special meeting for the sixth before the, before the ninth.
The mayor has the discretion to call that, he's, he can call it and we're gonna...
Hey, if he can call it, we're gonna have it for sixth.
He just needs to post it.
When, I mean, what time, about what time, get what happens, because it's seventy-two hours, what time do you need to be posted by?
The notice needs to be posted seventy-two hours in advance of the meeting.
Okay, so tomorrow, sometime tomorrow, alright? Working hours, good deal. And when will we do the one to canvass the votes?
I think it's the discussion.
Correct. Alright. You say a jury?
There's two more exceptions. There's two more exceptions.
No, you take the session. Alright.
The city council will not convene to executive session pursuant to the following sections of the Texas Government Code, Texas Government Code section five fifty-one, point oh seven one, consultations with attorney, consultations with interim city attorney to seek advice or of said attorney about one A pending contemplated litigation and/or one two, a settlement offer regarding in re ongoing and/or contemplated litigation related to letter from Steel Burger Law Group on behalf of employee Solomon Omatoya asserting claims of racial discrimination, retaliation, and sexual harassment against former chief of police Jason Jordan, council member Michael Pattonfuss, and council member Jennifer Thompson. Uh, section B, um, Texas Government Code, section five fifty-one oh seven one, consultations with attorney, consultations with interim city attorney to seek advice of said attorney about one A pending or contemplated litigation and/or two, a matter in which the duty of the attorney to the governmental body under the Texas Rules of Professional Conduct of the State Department of Texas clearly compless as Patrick five fifty-one, in re investigation conducted by outside legal counsel Ross Gannaway, P L L C, regarding sexual harassment complaints filed against council member Michael Pattonfuss.
So you had a lobby with complaints, was that ever seen or heard about?
We're gonna go into executive session.
Okay, but I don't know if I wanna go, because I've never seen a complaint.
Well, we're gonna discuss that in the executive session as well. Mayor, can you, um, have already closed the open meeting so we can go on?
Okay. This is a council meeting, it's temporary, it's called before we go into the executive session.
Eleven years ago.
So mayor, we need to reconvene at the open session and ask if there's any action to be taken.
Yeah, reconvene.
I propose to...
Yeah.
Will you reconvene? I would like to motion to adjourn the meeting.
Um, the mayor is entertaining if there's any action to be taken.
We didn't say that.
You didn't let him speak, and he's the presiding officer, but mayor, go ahead.
Okay. We are reconvening, we can take new session. And, uh, I would entertain a motion to take action on what we discussed.
I make a motion that we authorize the city attorney and the mayor to negotiate settlement regarding any claims from Solomon, Solomon Omatoya, sorry, according to the sexual harassment against former chief police Jason Jordan, council member Michael Pattonfuss, and council member Jennifer Thompson.
Jim?
No.
Jim?
Well, there, there needs to be a second. There was only a...
I'm sorry.
We need a second?
We need a second.
I'll say it.
No.
Yes.
Yes.
Roger?
Just working for to settle, this is nothing else. Out of group of...
Roger?
It's about, just I have to abstain.
First, please.
Motion carries.
So you do have two questions, so how should we hand Ross Gannaway, P L L C, investigate it?
Not on the agenda for public discussion.
Alright, um, was the T M L disc pool contacted for this, or did we just, uh?
Not on the agenda for public discussion.
Why the hell no, it's not.
Uh, I think the mayor has been told not you, Dan. So don't, you are?
I'm not, no, no.
So for me, we stay in the order.
So you make a motion to adjourn?
Corruption is finest.